Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Bussenow?
Here.
Trustee Kryzminski?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey, here. Supervisor Dunn?
Here. Before we go any further, we have a special presentation for this evening, and I would ask Chief Phillips to come forward.
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, March 18th, I had the honor to attend the annual Mount Clemens Elks Law and Order Night, where I had the privilege to present the 2019 Macomb Township Firefighter of the Year. Our Firefighter of the Year this year was presented to firefighter Joe Warren, and I'll read just a little bit as to why he was recognized as our Firefighter of the Year, and I believe when I'm done, there should be no questions as to how or why he was nominated. In 2018, Joe celebrated his first year with his nonprofit organization, a 501(c)(3) organization named Neighbors United. During that first year, he was able to raise a total of $37,700. Two hundred and nine families received financial support from the funds that he raised. Forty homeless veterans residing at Veterans returning home received $200 each totaling $8,000. Forty children and their families on the oncology and hematology floor at Children's Hospital received $200 each totaling $8,000. Five families residing at the Amelia Agnes Transition Home for Domestic Violence received $200 each totaling $1,000. And 124 local families that were nominated directly from his Neighbors United Facebook page received an average of $100 totaling over $12,900. In addition to those organizations, this year firefighter Warren has added firefighters with cancer. In order to kick that event off and to raise awareness, on June 5th firefighter Warren will walk from Station 2 to Grand Rapids in full firefighter turnout gear and SCBA. And with that, I'd like to present the Mount Clemens Elks Macomb Township Firefighter of the Year to firefighter Joe Warren.
Holy crap.[172.31][172.31][applause] Thank you very much. Chief Phillips, I would like to start every meeting out like that, if you can help me out on that.[220.12][220.12][laughter] We will now move on, and we will have the approval of agenda items with any additions, deletions, or corrections. Ms. Posey?
Madam Supervisor, we have a proposed add-on to the consent agenda item F1, request to attend free live fire instructor training. Proposed add-on in closed session, agenda item 7A, closed session to discuss real property acquisition per MCL 15.268, section D. Proposed add-on to new business agenda item 8A, request to adopt resolution to authorize submission of MDNR, MNRTF grant for 26 Mile Road properties. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair, I had a question about board comments, the order of board comments. Last meeting, we changed the order of board comments, which I'm not sure of an opinion on either way. However, I did not want to ask Mr. Ed Carey sat in, does a great job, and he said the reason for that was primarily a software issue. And our clerk was not here, I did not want to put Ed Carey in a spot. What, um, can you answer me, what software issue is dictating the order of how we respond in board comments?
We'll let Ms. Posey go through that question.
It's not a software issue, it's actually, we're working with the new software program that is now going to be putting together our agenda, and after meeting with them and reviewing the order of comments, their suggestion was trustee up to supervisor, leaving the supervisor last to make her comments. It has been how they've established the agendas in other communities, and it was a recommendation with to us, so we followed it.
Okay, who are they?
It's the software consultants that we're working with.
Who is that? Who are the software con- who's the software consultant?
Civic Plus.
All right, so they are dictating our agenda?
No, they didn't dictate it. We gave them an example of our agenda, and they asked if we had any questions, concerns, if we wanted to look at other samples, anything that we would recommend changing. You'll also see that we're no longer calling it old business on the agenda, we're calling it unfinished business. So, there's a few things that they suggested in recommending in the order of the way that the agenda goes. We're responsible for composing the agenda, so we made those changes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I may have missed an email that happened sometime. I don't remember getting information before last meeting that they had recommended that, because I think as a township board, we should be setting our agenda, not software.
No, software's not setting our agenda. Actually, it's the clerk's office that sets the agenda and composes it, so we're the ones that put the agenda together.
Okay, thanks for that answer, because last week Ed Carey did, his quote was, "This is primarily based on the recommendation of software."
Yeah, I'm not sure that Ed Carey was in a position to answer that question.
Okay, all right.
Any other?
Seeing none, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Kryzminski, to approve the agenda as amended.
Nope, presented.
As presented.
Oh, amended, you're right, amended.
I'm sorry, it is amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have approval of the bills. There's two bill runs, as usual. If anyone wishes an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, if there are no issues with either bill run, I move that we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to authorize payment of both bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The previous meeting minutes from March 13th, 2019 are before you. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the previous meeting minutes from March 13th as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Second.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the minutes from March 13th, 2019. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The consent agenda item, our routine matters that come before the board frequently. If you wish an item removed from the consent, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, hearing none, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Smith to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. We have public comments, and this is on agenda items only. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please come to the podium, state your name, and remember there is a three-minute time limit.
My name is Dave Ash, and I want to thank the board for taking a couple minutes to listen to item 8A. I think it's a proposed add-on. It's about the park on 26 Mile Road. I have a financial interest, and I actually farmed the piece of land next door to that piece.[592.32][592.32][laughter] Now, we've owned, the family's owned that piece of property for a number of years. It's a beautiful piece of land, but there are some challenges with it, and you can summarize it by saying that we do occasionally have problems with trespassers. Trespassers in themselves are not a problem, but it's showing on the board now. We are the west side of that property. When the trespassers come on, the problem is that sometimes they leave stuff, or sometimes they take stuff. Now, we have, we're members of the community, we have some friends and family that live around the area, and they help us police the area, and Macomb Township Police help us out with that area. But we still have trespassers, and we do get garbage that's left on our property. So, we're managing the property along the borders there. The concern is, with the park next door, we think it's a good idea to have a park next door, but we would like to see that the park goers, along with their animals, stay on the park and don't encroach onto our property to damage the crops. We have commercial farming going on the property. We'd hate to see the crops get damaged by activities, people crossing across the border, and we just want people to stay in the park. There is a fence along the 26 Mile Road, a chain link fence. We're hoping that it would be extended the length of the property, just to keep people on, the park goers on the park. So, that's one of our main concerns. Another item I wanted to mention about that piece of property, the property to the south has a natural deer herd that herds there every winter. The concern would be that if you do have park goers there during the winter, you can impact that, depending on the activity that you have in that park. There have been ranges of between 75 and 200 deer that winter, every winter, on that south piece of property. So, we would, I would recommend that, you know, we limit the hours during the winter not to impact that deer herd. It's one of the larger ones in the area. It's definitely the largest deer herd that gathers every winter in Macomb Township, so there is concern about that. I'm hoping with everything that's addressed, that that would be taken into consideration, what your park winter hours are. I mean, we realize that your dogs will be leashed and that, and we know that most park residents will not, most park goers will not cross the line, but there's occasionally, there's people that would come onto the property, look on it. During, along that border there, the trails that are in place do come up to our border, and sometimes it is hard to realize what is the piece next door and what is our property. So, we want to prevent all of that. We can't actively police that, so if we had a border there that would keep park people on that side of the fence, and it would keep animals in the park, and it would help us with any disruption. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alison Brackey Ash. I am part of the owners of where they have the property. I also concur with David Ash on basically everything that he just said. We would like that border to be some type of fence to keep, you know, individuals out from roaming on the property, and we have had issues in the past where police had to come there and check out what was going on. It's a nice idea, but you're also going to have trespassers that are not going to abide by the laws of staying on, in the woods there, they're going to, you know, come over on the other side. That is basically it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is on agenda items. Very well, then we will move on to new business, and this is a resolution honoring Michaela Ramos for earning the Girl Scout Gold Award. Ms. Ramos has been a member of Girl Scout Troop 30308 for 13 years. She dedicated 80 hours to complete her project, submitted a very detailed project proposal, and led a team of volunteers to complete the implementation of her plan. She organized an innovative recycling program with the goal of reducing the amount of waste being sent to landfills. She did this within four schools within the Chippewa Valley School District. I would like to comment that the Girl Scout Gold Award is equivalent to Boy Scouts Eagle Scout. So, this is the highest honor that the Girl Scouts can achieve. Therefore, Macomb Township Board of Trustees is going to hereby proclaim that Sunday, May 5, 2019, is Michaela Ramos Day in Macomb Township. And we would need a motion to adopt this resolution.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Support. Motion by Mr. Kryzminski, seconded by Mr. Bussenow. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Kryzminski?
Yes.
Trustee Bussenow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. This resolution is adopted. The next is going to be the add-on, and it's the closed session to discuss real property acquisition. So, we need a motion to adjourn into closed session.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Support. Motion by Mr. Kryzminski, seconded by Mr. Bussenow to adjourn to closed session. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Kryzminski?
Yes.
Trustee Bussenow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted, and we are adjourned. We are back in open session, and we discussed real property acquisition. Ms. Posey, were there any motions?
Madam Chair, this closed session item was for informational purposes only.
Thank you. Then we will move on to number eight, and this is a request to approve rezoning of parcel number 0822-400-023 from agricultural to office low-rise. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor and members of the board. Again, this request is to go from the agricultural district to the office low-rise district. The stated purpose for the rezoning is for a daycare facility. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on March 13th, and during that public hearing, they, or I'm sorry, I think I got the wrong day for you, on March 5th, excuse me, they held the public hearing. They did hear any comments from the public, they took a look at the professional reviews, and they are recommending approval to the township board at this point in time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I would make a motion to approve the...
Rezoning.
Rezoning, yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion by Mr. Kryzminski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to rezone parcel 0822-400-023 from agricultural to office low-rise. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Number 8A was an add-on, and that is a request to adopt a resolution to authorize submission of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant for 26 Mile Road property. Mr. Meyer, again.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The board held a public hearing at its previous meeting on this piece of property. At that point, we took comments regarding whether or not what the public's feelings were of going for a grant for this particular piece of property. What I did find out as I was preparing the grant is that we can take the entire cost, including the closing costs, and include that as part of the grant application, so you'll notice in the resolution that it is for 1,000,000...
250?
Yeah, 1,250,000. The 50,000 is the estimate for the closing costs, and that would include the MNRTF grant for 937,500 with the township's obligation of 312,500.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Meyer?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I would motion to approve the resolution to proceed with the grant application for their acquisition of the two abutting properties with the sum of approximately 40 vacant areas of wooded property located on the south side of 26 Mile, approximately 1,150 feet east of Card Road.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to adopt this resolution. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Kryzminski?
Yes.
Trustee Goodhue, or Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bussenow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. This resolution is adopted. Next, we have an engineering department, and this is to deny the request to authorize Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick to provide design engineering and surveying services for Amber Ridge. Mr. Van Tifler?
Yes, ma'am, chairperson, members of the board. The developer of a piece of property here in the township would like to use Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick to do their private development engineering work. Occasionally, the township board gets these types of requests when Anderson Eckstein has done work previously on that piece of property, whether it's surveying or other engineering-type work. In this particular case, doing some research doesn't look like Anderson Eckstein and Westrick has done any work on this property. Therefore, I'm recommending denial, because I don't want to set a precedent that any developer can come in and use the consultant that we use. It does create a bit of havoc in our department, so with that, I'm recommending denial, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Van Tifler?
No questions from Madam Chair, but I just had a comment. Just want to thank Jim for explaining this to me, because it's kind of an easy issue, but it also is kind of a complicated issue going forward. But explaining this and making sure that you're looking out for conflict of interest in our township is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Madam Chair, hearing no other action, I would motion to deny the request to authorize Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick to provide design engineering surveying services for Amber Ridge.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to deny the request. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have a fire department request to accept the 2017 AFG Regional Video Conference Grant. Chief Phillips?
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, in 2017, I submitted a grant application to the Assistance to Firefighters Grant as part of a regional grant application made up of numerous fire departments throughout southeast Michigan. The grant was for video conferencing equipment for all four of the fire stations. The video conference equipment will connect us to all of the fire departments that were a part of the grant application, and will allow us to share training sessions amongst those departments. It will also allow us to record all of our training sessions that can be used amongst the stations and the different shifts, and will allow for the on-duty crews to remain at their assigned station. It will also give us the ability to have the morning shift meetings with each shift while they remain within their assigned station. The total cost of the grant application for the four stations is $184,986. The grant requires a matching contribution of 10%, thus making our contribution $18,498.60. If approved, the equipment will be installed within the next 60 days, except for Station 1. Station 1 equipment will be installed once the new public safety building is constructed, and the video conferencing equipment will be able to be utilized by the Sheriff Department at Station 1. Therefore, it's my recommendation to accept the 2017 AFG Regional Video Conference Grant in the amount of $184,986 with a matching contribution of $18,498.60. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment, Madam Chair, before I make the motion, thank you, Chief, for submitting the grant on this. Really nice, thank you. Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept the 2017 AFG Regional Video Conference Grant in the amount, as stated, $184,986 with a matching contribution of $18,498.60.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to accept the grant and authorize payment of the matching contribution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you, Chiefs.
General Counsel has a request to authorize the supervisor to execute A&amp;T and T First Amendment to the lease agreement on behalf of the township. Mr. Sardi?
Madam Chair, members of the board, AT&amp;T has certain lease rights relative to the cell tower and their access to the cell tower at Station 1. In connection with the development of the new public safety building, Chief Phillips has worked with them on developing the new area, and this has been reviewed by our engineering. Basically, with the new building and new place, the area for access to the cell tower and where the utilities for that cell tower are located need to be moved to accommodate the new building, and so that's all that this does.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, Madam Chair. Do you need that, you need a motion on that to authorize that?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, authorize the supervisor to execute the attached A&amp;T First Amendment to lease agreement and memorandum of the First Amendment to the lease agreement on behalf of the township.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski.
Second.
Supported by Ms. Posey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Now, we have public comments on non-agenda items. If you wish to speak to the board, please come to the podium, state your name, and remember there's a three-minute time limit.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor, honorable board members. I shouldn't have a problem staying with three minutes, even though I'm an elected official.[1617.86][1617.86][laughing]
What time you...
Yes. As I said, and, Trustee Smith, welcome. It's nice to see a full board as we go forward. It's awesome. I just want to, again, I'm Jeff Yarick, State Representative. I represent the majority of Macomb Township, with the exception of the four square miles on the southwest corner, which would be Rep. Marino. We work, I always say, we work very well together, talking about Macomb Township and how we can work together for the good of the township. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to speak at the state of the township. It sounds like things are going very well for the township going forward into the future, so glad to see that. Tonight, I was at the Clint Macomb Library, having one of my listening tours. I make a point of getting throughout my district, making myself available to constituents to talk about issues, and a number of Macomb Township residents to come out and talk about their concerns, so I'm glad to have those conversations. I know the latest thing you've heard, sort of the 45 cents per gallon gas tax that's been proposed. I would just share for any of us, I've definitely, I don't have a counterproposal, I've actually, I stay with the original proposal that I started, talked about last year, which was moving up the 2015 roads plan, and again, purging our state budget based on needs and wants, as I think we understand as fiscal conservatives. I don't know that the people are confident that they're getting the most for their money at this point, and so before we ask for more money, I think we need to show our taxpayers that we've done everything we can with the money that we've already received. So, just kind of sharing where I stand on the issue of raising the gas tax at this point. I think we have a lot to do in Lansing. Just lastly, again, I want to reach out to the board and also the Macomb Township residents and say that I'm available. I very much care that local and state government works well together, hand in hand, to serve our residents, and not have this issue of, you know, state versus local. So, I think we're a team in serving our residents. Again, if any of the board members, if you have any questions or concerns that I can help you with, please feel free to reach out to my office. I think many of you have my number, I'm happy to talk to you about things that we could do together, and I said the same thing for the residents of Macomb. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Van Sweden. I'm the superintendent of New Haven Community Schools, and I'm here this evening to share some really important information with you. I know how much the Macomb Township community cares about their schools. I also know that the Macomb Township community cares about safety and security, and about having an up-to-date learning environment for their children, including technology and the infrastructure to support it. I also know that the Macomb Township community cares about having safe, reliable transportation for their children. for their children to and from school, to athletic events, to robotics competitions, and to so many more school-related activities. On May 7th, the New Haven Board of Education has placed a $25 million bond proposal on the ballot. The two-phase proposal will affect areas, each of these areas, safety and security, the learning environment, technology, and transportation. Phase one will begin in 2019 and phase two in 2024. This comprehensive proposal will have a positive impact on the New Haven Community Schools and on surrounding communities, including Macomb Township, for the next 10 to 15 years. If the proposal is approved by voters, the current tax rate will increase by .9 mils. For the average New Haven Community School homeowner, the cost will be about $32.40 a year, or about nine cents a day. For many residents, including our senior citizens, there will be no increase. Now, more detailed information can be found on our website at newhavencommunitieschools.net and under School Election Information. There is an FAQ, a news release, a short video, and information for absentee voters. For the first time, registered voters no longer need an excuse to vote absentee. Safety and security, a 21st century learning environment for our children, technology, and safe and reliable transportation matters to all of us as parents, grandparents, and members of the community. And so quite simply, it's time. It's time for the New Haven Community Schools 2019 bond. And I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Oh, Jerry, address is on file. Just want to inform the board, I'm not sure you're aware of it, or most of you are probably aware of it. Last week, I believe it was Dakota High School had an electronics recycling program. They didn't charge a thing for it. I don't know how they paid for it. Maybe out of school millage tax dollars or whatever. I have no idea. I'm just glad the board didn't sign on with Shelby and spend $30,000 to join Shelby's recycling program when Dakota had it for free for the residents. Just a good thing that you put it off and postponed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. Madam Supervisor, members of the board. Frank Kuzma, 1-6188, Jenny Drive. What is the Headley Amendment? Well, the Headley Amendment was passed in 1978. It required that Michigan voters have to pass any new taxation. And I've got materials and hopefully it won't take up my time. I have seven of these copies to give to the board. Permission to approach, Madam Chair.
I'll pass it, Frank.
Pass it. Thank you. On September 26th, this board unanimously voted to raise the customer charges from residents for water and sewage and the commodity rates for water and sewage. This was a quarterly fee. It was agenda item number seven. I spoke on that agenda item and as stated in the minutes. Item seven raised the customer service charge for water from $7.25 a quarter to $10.25 a quarter. That represented a 41.4% increase and then also added a 2.9% commodity rate increase. The same for sewage customer fee from $7.25 to $11.65, or a 60.7% increase. The only basis presented by the consultant, Utility Financial Solutions by Ms. Lund, was an increase in revenue. I don't believe these increases were a valid user fee. It was a tax. It was designed to raise revenue and it should have been passed by the electors under Headley. Now, in your packet that I gave, there's, which took place after September 26th, there was an article written in the Detroit Free Press by Bill Leitner. I suggest that you read it. I won't go into it. The only reason why I'm bringing this up is that there's class actions lawsuits that were filed and successfully prosecuted by this Hanley firm in Detroit, Royal Oak, Ferndale, Birmingham, Townships of Bloomfield, Watford, and Brighton. Cases pending are against Sinclair Shores, Taylor, and Harper Woods. The principles of the case are the same as Bolt versus Lansing, which is an article that's on the top of the packet. So why am I bringing this up now? Well, I brought it up, I didn't bring it up directly, but the raising of revenue was, I thought, steep. I suggest that this board revisit the increase, get opinion of legal counsel, possibly outside legal counsel as well, and make an educated, informed decision whether this is a user fee or an invalid tax. Then if Macomb Township is sued, it can deal with the consequences knowingly, having voted for what you voted for with this increase. Thank you. And I'm available if anyone has any questions. But I would ask that you read this over and take a look at it and pursue whatever due diligence you find fit and proper. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very well, seeing no one, we'll move on to trustees' comments.
Yes, Madam Chair. I've got a few comments tonight. I wanted to follow up with quite a few people who spoke up tonight. I've been very consistent in saying thank you for coming to the board, keeping us updated on things. First of all, to the Ash family, I feel honored that, Bill, you reached out to me this week to kind of get the ball rolling on our awareness of the property. I want to thank you. I've talked to you before on some issues. And I know that your children came out tonight and thank you for, you know, doing what you do in the township and, you know, I don't think any park plan right now is completely final. We're trying. As we go forward, we're definitely going to keep this awareness in our mind of what we need to do with the property. So thank you very much for coming and talking. And I appreciate the tone you took. I said that last week. I think it goes a lot further than when people come up and, you know, try to call us dummies or something like that. Thank you for the way you handled everything tonight. I want to thank our state rep for coming out tonight. I've said, told many people, you definitely are, for me, inspiration for keeping an open line of communication with residents. And also, your honesty and transparency with everything you do. Thank you. I look forward to every time you talk. I thought you did a great job at the State of the Township. I don't want to say our supervisor didn't do a good job or better job than you or one or the other, but you did a great job when you talked at the State of Township. And thank you for keeping engaged with the residents. I want to thank the New Haven Superintendent for coming tonight. I think you know I'm an 18-year public school teacher. Thank you for what you do every day for the future of students. Paul, thanks for your compliment tonight with the board. We do our best up here, so we're trying. And I think on most days, we're doing more than trying. So thank you. Frank, thank you for keeping our numbers straight, okay? You do a good job with that and bringing our awareness to tax numbers. And sometimes I learn a thing or two when you come to the mic, so thank you very much. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, just one comment. On Friday, the 29th of March, is National Vietnam War Veterans Day. The Vietnam Veterans Chapter 154 is hosting an open house that day from 10 to 6:00. It is at 18,025 50 Mile Road, Clinton Township. There will be a slide presentation all day of the 149 veterans from Macomb County that gave their lives during that war. They will have free hot dogs, snacks at the sports center. Please come and visit. That's part of the group I belong to. And if anybody's in the audience that are veterans, please stand. I know Pat is. Ash, you're Army, aren't you? Thank you for your service. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Treasurers' comments?
I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Clerk's comments?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Voters on our permanent no reason mail-in voting list have been mailed their application to obtain a ballot for the New Haven School District special election. We have mailed 1,882 applications on March 1st and 743 have been returned to date. We anticipate mailing the ballots for the May 7th special election the week of April 8th. Only voters that live in the New Haven School District are eligible to vote in this special election. If you have not yet returned your application to the clerk's office, please do so as soon as possible. Also, if you would like to be added to the no reason mail-in voting permanent list for future elections, please contact the clerk's office for more information. And also, Mr. Bosino, just to add to my earlier comment with regards to the agenda, I did meet and discuss with both the treasurer and the supervisor the ideas that we had come across when we were looking to improve the agenda. It is recommended good practice to have the supervisor close out the meeting with her comments. And I also emailed the supervisor prior to the last meeting, letting her know that we were going to roll this out on the new agenda. That's all I have.
Thank you. We'll move on then to supervisors' comments. And this morning, I received an email that this was National Tornado Awareness Day and that everybody's, all the different communities were going to test out their sirens at 1:00 PM.
Yep.
Well, at 1:03, and Mr. Sardi can attest to this, my phone started ringing and ringing and ringing. It was not an alarm, which I patiently explained to every caller, but just in case any of you are out there wondering what those sirens were for, it was National Tornado Awareness Day. There was no emergency of any kind anywhere. The second thing I want to remind you is that tomorrow, March 28th, is the day that the librarian from the library will be on jeopardy.
Yep.
So don't forget that. And Patrick, did you load up my presentation?
Yes, Madam Supervisor.
At the March 13th public comments, there were comments about buying land for a new park and selling land that we already have. And Mr. DeCaro was kind enough to provide some information that I would like to share. This is from National Recreation and Parks Association. The recommended number of acres of parkland for every thousand residents is 9.25 acres. We have currently 88,702 residents. That means it's recommended that we have 842 acres of parkland. We currently have 271. Parks and Rec staff size in terms of full-time per 1,000, oh, 10,000 residents, 7.4 employees per 10,000 residents. That would mean that we should have 66 full-time employees. We currently have seven, and they do a wonderful job. Cost recovery of Parks and Rec. 29% of operations should come from non-tax revenue. In other words, the fees that you pay to use the facilities. Macomb Township recovers between 122 and 125% of the costs. The other facts that I want you to be aware of is that all of the available sports sites are reserved for the year. There is no other ball, diamond, soccer field, football field available. Walking trails, we have one and a half miles. Biking trails, none. We have four picnic shelters and two playscapes. Residents are asking for more parks in the southern half of the township. If there is attractive land for sale in that area, please let us know. But as you can see by the township map, the only open areas are, number one, owned by developers, school districts, industrial concerns, churches, or small farms and vegetable stands. Number two, or the branches of the Clinton River make development of a park unfeasible due to DNR wetlands restrictions. At this time, the board is pursuing a grant to help offset the cost of a nature park. The county planning commission and Six Rivers Conservancy have stepped up and given letters of support and have offered to help Macomb Township acquire this property. The grant application is due by April 1 and the results will be made known on December 1 of 2019. If for some reason the grant is denied, the township can always sell the parcel or hold on to it until water and sewer get to that junction. Thank you. That's all I have. And that concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I'll move on that motion.
Motion by Mr. Krasminski?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries and we are adjourned.